The following program is made possible by First State Bank. Offering secure online and mobile banking. First State Bank is ready to serve your financial needs with locations in Warren, Hermitage, and Hampton. First State Bank, the difference is leadership. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
Reappoint Roger George to the Intermodal body. Motion in second to reappoint Roger George to the Intermodal. Any discussion? All those in favor? Show of hands. Unanimous. Okay. And we need to kind of go back a little bit. And the purchase of the parks and wreck truck, if you were agenda meeting, you understand what happened. We got into an emergency situation where we had a truck that was available and if we didn't take it, we would lose it. And the truck that you all had voted to purchase was, it would have to be ordered and it was going to be six to 10 months and that was no guarantee that we would still get it. So like I told you in the agenda meeting, I did check with Alderman Henderson because she was the one that had made the motion. So in making the motion, we need to mention that it was an emergency situation.
Mayor, I move that we accept your moving forward with purchasing a different vehicle due to the emergency situation that the city of Warren was in and this would be most advantageous for the city.
Motion in second to accept the purchase of the parks and wreck truck as an emergency situation. Any discussion? All those in favor? By a show of hands. Unanimous.
And I also suggest that we still document well and have that in the records as well.
Okay, we need permission to sell that vehicle that was being used by Parks and Wrecks. It, my understanding that it's about the only thing it's going to sell for is the parks, but I've already had interest of a couple of people. So we will put that out for bid. If you all will approve the sale of that, the 2007 four-wheel drive Chevrolet Silverado.
I know that it'd be put out for bid.
Motion in second to sell the 2007 Chevrolet Silverado by bid. Any discussion? All those in favor? By a show of hands. Unanimous. Okay. And the next one is a resolution to put June the 19th into our personnel policy as another holiday for our employees. Resolution number A 665. It's a resolution amending resolution number A 559 of the city of Warren, Arkansas to amend the city's personnel policy section 5.2 to add June 19th to the holidays and holiday pay section. Whereas the mayor and city council has determined that section 5.2 of the personnel policy and practice manual agrees to add June the 19th as a paid holiday for Warren city employees. Now therefore be it resolved by the Warren city council that the original personnel policy and practice manual be revised and adopted and go into effect January 1, 2022.
I move that we adopt resolution number 665 and that the resolution heading should be resolution number 665. We have 661 on our document.
We found a mistake at the last minute today and I've got the corrected one with me. I apologize for not bringing that to your attention. I've got a motion that needs a second.
Second.
Motion in second to adopt resolution number A 665. Any discussion? All of those in favor? By a show of hands. Unanimous. Now then we come to the public comments section and is there any older person that would like to be recognized or Ms. Henderson?
I'm already listed.
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. And I would like to just ask the council if you would consider a resolution honoring one of our former mayors. Mayor John Frazier served the city of Warren with distinction for 12 years. He was really noted for, and this, I was still in school at this particular time, but he was noted for the tornado that hit Warren in 1975 and instrumental in keeping Potlatch here. So I hope that you will agree that we should do a resolution honoring him. He was a member of Ward III. I did not hear from him often, but when I did hear from him, he spoke words of wisdom and considered Zach and I his alderman. So that is my comment. Does anyone have a problem with the administration moving forward?
We'll have, get that ready and check with the family and who they'd like to have us present it to them.
Okay. And I do have additional information or you can touch bases with the family if Charlotte should need this to complete the resolution.
If you can leave that with her tonight, that would help.
I will certainly do that. Thank you.
Okay. Now then, signed in or call, our first one on the agenda is Mr. Robert Bob Smalling. He had called in earlier to speak. So Mr. Smalling, you're welcome to come up here. And I believe he has passed out a, some information for you to have. Is that your tagline? Who's proceeded? So we recognize you.
I'm president of BCEDC for this year. And I was asked by my board to come forward. Apparently there's been some question about what we do. So I'm here basically, what I put out there for you shows you some of the activities we have, you know, every year. The first page is basically about this year. One of the big things that we do is meet with industry, established industry. It's hard to recruit industry, but sometimes even harder to keep what you have. But keeping what you have is what you have to do. If you start losing industry, then it's going to be hard to attract anyone in if there are people leaving. So it's real important to meet with them. Every time we meet with industry, and you can see we met with several this year, there's several questions we ask, but one of the main questions we ask is what can we do for you? You know? And we ask them to open up communication lines if they have a problem. Several years ago, we used to have a group of local business industries who got together and decided what their all common needs were. Electricians, maintenance people, you know, those type of people. And they looked at ways they could work to get that all to be beneficial to all of them. But there's several things we've done, but established industry is it. We also worked with game and fish this year. We met with Maxwell Flooring people. We actually went out and had a meeting at Potlatch this year. Of course, we kept in contact with Bradley County Medical Center about their COVID, talked about COVID inoculations. We have the mayors come to our meeting. All three of the county mayors come to keep us up to date on what's going on in their areas. With the county judge, I have Representative Seback on our committee. So she's there regularly to keep us informed of what's going on at Seback. Of course, all these other issues at the bottom are things that we are ongoing discussion about these, you know, different items that we have done this year. In the past and in right now in the future, we are the Intermodal actually is headquartered in our office. Very difficult right now without staffing to make that continue on, but that's our, the South Arkansas Intermodal Facility Authority is headquartered in Warren, Arkansas. As you can see, we worked on the National Guard. Some of y'all are not young enough to, old enough to know about Abe Brant, but when Abe Brant first came here, that was on the Burbidge property. And we were quite instrumental, some of the older guys, older guys, quite instrumental in getting them there. Later they became Robbins, then it became Armstrong, now they're AHS. So nothing stays the same. Of course, wood products is a big part of what we do. We have met all the way to UAM forestry about research and the future. We've also, Warehouser now has gotten out of wood production and gone more into wood sale, to land sales. And we had one of their speakers in to talk to us about that. He said we have, you know, toured Potlatch in the past, Chamber and the BCEDC got together and had that, had a tour. We've also toured Armstrong at different times. We did eventually, we brought in Morris Poultry, worked with them closely to get them here. Now they're okay foods. Some of these industries are not just a matter of what they do individually, how many people they employ, but how it affects the whole area. When you've got a chip mill out here, the chip mill only employs three or four people, but the chip mill has loggers that are coming in there. If you go out by there, there's going to be eight or 10 trucks out there most any time bringing logs in. So that spreads over there. We worked with, on the shooting range, it came up in our meetings for years and years before we finally got some of that started. The chip mill out there was something that was put on the Edgerton property originally out there. We used to publish a newsletter of jobs. People say the unemployment rate is zero, is high, but we have lots of jobs that are unfilled right now. And people just need to know about those and get to them. We also, our building down here was donated to us by APNL and it's used several times. We were, I guess that was the festival committee that was in there today?
Chamber.
Chamber meeting was there today. But every, pretty much every day, there's some type of meetings, including city committees. I know water meets down there regularly, so there are several things that go on there. The signs coming in and out of Warren on 63 North and 278 East were purchased by us. And also we, I didn't know this, but the lake that was supposed to northwest part of town, mainly west, we actually paid for engineering on some of that. We do have, still have some properties. We don't have many. The industrial park right now basically is pretty much full. Edgerton property with the chip mill and the Soros lease out there is pretty much taken care of. We still have the Griggs property, which y'all have part of. And at the bottom there is a list of our local people who are on the board of directors. We have a 15-member board. We just lost Steve Henson off our board and we lost Matt Mathur off our board this year. Steve, of course, moved to Chattanooga and Matt went to a higher calling. So is there, I would be glad to answer any questions at this point. Would like to let you know that we are having our annual meeting every year since January. We meet the last Monday night in January, the January 31st at Emmanuel Baptist Church. You're welcome to come. At this point in time, we have EDC Director Mike Preston is tentatively scheduled to be there. So it would be important to be there if you, you're welcome to come. And also welcome to join if you'd like to be a part of that. The main thing we'd like to do is try to open communication with the city. I know you have, Angela has the Economic Development, Community Economic Development Committee. We'd love to meet with it, y'all to see what you have plans, what do you think the city needs or what we can do to help. We're not, we don't work on our own. We work in conjunction with and try to work with, you know, anybody and everybody. We try to keep contacts with the EDC, with the legislature, with all those folks, and that's what we do. So if there's any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those.
Any council member have any questions of Mr. Dr. Smalling?
If not, thank you for your attention.
How much contribution has the city made through the BCIDC?
How much total?
Yes.
Over the years, I don't know. I know the, originally when the tax was passed, the ones that sales tax for economic development and city facilities, I know we bought ads, we paid for ads, we had telephone banks. I know they call people out of my office. So the sales tax, we worked real hard on that to get that passed in the first place.
Any other questions, statements?
I thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming. Next on our agenda, we have Mr. Scott Richardson, who is here to address the council.
I just want to come up and voice my opinion on this speed bumps on Cedar Street here and ask that y'all reconsider them beside it being the main artery for emergency vehicles back that way. I'm representing, I counted it up and it was 28 houses that they let you sign. All you could sign is just the people within the streets. You can't go back on Cedar. And all of them, I had like seven or eight call me and won't know if that was a good deal down there. They hated it. But I, I, I had seven more, seven more houses left are landowners there on the street. I've got all seven that said no. I talked to the people, a few of the people, I made some calls to the ones that signed it and I didn't call too many more. Some of the numbers weren't, they were fictitious numbers. I couldn't, I leave messages, I couldn't get them, call me back. But the one or two I did talk to said they, the people that came by and one of them signed it were just mainly talking about the seven o'clock traffic going to wash tall flooring out there. And I mean, we gotta have wash tall flooring. They're going to get there one way or another. It's just, it's 20 mile an hour speed limit. And I hit it today just to see and I hit it at 20 mile an hour now. Now these speed bumps are supposed to be built for certain speeds. I don't know what that one's built for or if anybody knew how to build it or what to build, but it'll knock you out of the truck if you hit it 20 mile an hour. And I've, I've been a resident on that street 65 years. I rode my tricycle up and down it. I don't think I got run over or anything, but I just, I just wanted everybody to know that I'm still on Cedar Street, born and raised on Cedar Street. And I'm just asking you to reconsider it because we've gone these years and didn't need it. And I, like I say, I'm representing the seven other people that were left. I called four of the people on this street live out of town on the sheet. I called six people and I finally got two people to respond and I really felt like I might have been trying to intimidate them, so I didn't, I just didn't call anymore because they weren't, they just basically signed to get it out, you know, to get, basically just get them out of the face, I guess you'd say. But anyway, I realize as children on the street, I realize that. I've been one of them on that street. And like I say, I didn't need a speed bump and I'm on the street every day. Nobody, nobody I see going over 20 mile an hour out there. Somebody ain't even going near that because I'm standing out there on the porch, hour or two a day, watching them come by. And it's not that much distance.
Are you saying that you, did you know about the petition? You were not aware of it?
I was not, I was not informed in any way, form, or fashion. I have five of the 25 lots that's on that street. Nobody even, nobody came to see me. I had, I did have one of the committee members of the street say that, you know, we dropped the ball, that you weren't notified because you probably got as much property there. And I'm not saying, I mean, I'm any better, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, I thought I should have been notified. I'm not even sure it's legal, but you know, if I've got that much.
They did it. Yeah, and the petition reads that live on the street.
Yeah, you see, I can't, I can't go get any more signature unless I go back and hit on them people again. But the other seven that were on that street, I've got all seven of them. But I can't go for the other end of Cedar Street where they're calling me. I told Denise, I said, I ain't never been here but twice in my life on the city council up here. And you know, they're all asking me, we can't represent anybody. You've got to go represent. I told Denise, I said, I picked my battles. I don't, I'm not in this bag for anything.
Mayor, I hope that this item be referred back to the street committee to investigate.
Yeah, I think that's what we need. Let us take it back to the street committee.
I have a motion.
Go over it again, so.
Your second?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion in second for this issue to go back, speed bumps on Cedar Street to go back to street committee for consideration and hopefully a resolution. Any discussion? All those in favor by a show of hands? Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Now we still have two others that had signed in to speak on this. Ms. Carrie Brown.
I live at 402 East Cedar Street that I'm aware of. Mr. Scott Richardson does not live, live on East Cedar Street. On the petition that I had signed, for it to be signed, was between Chestnut and between Munn Street. So the ones that live on up on East Cedar was not anywhere that we were worried about that on, that where the main traffic area was coming through. On several occasions, one in particular, me and my daughter were riding our bicycles. We were on the right side of the road. We crossed over in front and as she was pulling into the driveway, I had to walk because by the grace of God, a block ahead, my bicycle steering wheel went out. And as I was walking, starting to cross the street, a car whipped around the corner, had to be going 30 miles an hour, did not slow down, almost hit me and my daughter. It's happened on several occasions. Since the speed bumps have been put in, we still have people speeding down the streets. We had a lady speed down the road, hit the speed bump, her back end flew open, her contents started falling out. She sped through the stop sign, hit the next speed bump, then finally stopped. We helped her, me, my daughter, and our neighbor, her little boy across the street, helped gather this lady's things. Even though she ran the stop sign, we gathered up her things for her to hand to her and she said, thank you. I did not realize they had installed speed bumps down through here. But she still sped in the middle of the night. We still hear people, day, night. We have down that street, a total of 15 children and every single person that I went to their house directly and asked them to sign said, yes, please, I want to sign this because I am tired of the speeding down through here. They said, our kids can't even ride the bicycles out in the road if they wanted to just kind of whip around and come back. Or even a family just wanting to walk around the neighborhood. You can't because people do not look. They, they run the stop signs constantly through there on Bradley and Cedar, right there. They run it all the time. Teenagers, we've had teenagers texting on their phones, run the stop sign, ramp up onto the curb in front of my house, almost hit my neighbor's kid, our neighbor across the street, or other, I have another neighbor who sits on his front porch across the street and he said, watching people just speed up and down the road is ridiculous. He said, when his daughter was younger and they lived there, he said, they did not have to deal with this. And it's all hours of the day. It's just not at night or when people are going to work. It is all hours of the day. And it is ridiculous. I'm scared. That day when me and my daughter were almost hit, I cried. We have called the police so many times, the police have never showed up. We were told that when we signed the petition, that we were going to have some police officers come and start monitoring that area. We had one and he lives down there. And that's Officer Sharp. None of the other ones have ever come down there and watched these people speed. I had my phone out one day, recording people as they sped down through there, but there's no people speeding. There's no people speeding at all. My kids and the kids of the neighborhood, their lives are more important than somebody worried about their shocks on their vehicle. And yes, you can go over those speed bumps 20 miles an hour and it does not do anything to your vehicle. It doesn't, you don't feel like you're ramping and going on a roller coaster. It's pretty easy to go over at 20 miles an hour. And if you don't want to go over at 20 miles an hour, it's not that hard to slow down. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We've got one more. Ms. Brittany Bennett had signed up to speak.
My name's Brittany Bennett. I also live on East Cedar, down right next to her, Carrie. I personally have seen the speeding. We have called and asked for police presence before. We went to the extreme to ask for street speed bumps. Once again, as she said, it didn't help. I have two little boys, five and seven. One of them is autistic and if you know anything about autistic children, you know that safety is a major issue with them. I don't want to lose my child to somebody speeding. It's something that can be stopped. Mr. Richardson does not live on Cedar Street, so I'm not really, other than his business, I don't know what interest he has in, you know, whether or not we have them, but he could easily from his house go around to avoid the speed bumps. Carrie personally came and talked to me. She did not say anything about any seven o'clock PM traffic or 7:00 AM traffic. It's the traffic in general. And I do know for a fact from speaking with my neighbors, that they are all okay with the speed bumps. Or any of them that have children at least. My mother and I, at the intersection where my house is between East Cedar and North Bradley, have both been in accidents by people running those stop signs. So I mean, that, I just think that our children's lives are more important and it's not hard to, you know, slow down just a little bit to keep from hurting a child. Or at least if, you know, if you're going to take them up, then we need some police presence or something to stop it. That's all we're asking is for our children to be safe and I don't think that's too much to ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as we have vote, as the council has voted, this will be taken back to street committee if you would get with Charlotte, Ms. Mosley, and set up the meeting.
Do you tell me how much street meeting will be?
It'll be, it'll be made public and it's always a public meeting. Okay. Now then, let's move to our first report from Chief Hildreth. Can you hear me?
Do believe once again, you want to have the copy of my monthly report for the month of November. Pretty much been as usual. As you will see, we lost an officer the past month, but we also gained two officers. Pretty much been it as usual, as you will see, we lost an officer this past month, but we also gained two, two officers. So, it's a little too short, the um thing I wanted to take note of is in the um, the monthly report for the um vehicle repair. Yes, ma'am. I figured we would, that um highlighted, that highlighted yellow is not what we spent, we did not spend to fix that vehicle.
It's not.
No, 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 we did not spend that, that, I was just, that's what they are going to charge us to fix that vehicle. Um, I'd elected not to fix it, um, it's one of our older vehicles, we've already put quite a bit of money into it. Um, and that, as you see, that price tag could do it, it'd be basically a third of the price of a new vehicle for a vehicle with the type of mouth that it has on it.
It wasn't highlighted in our packet, but we highlighted.
Okay, okay.
Encircled it.
Okay, you guys should get a color copy, you need a color copy, I'm sorry about that. I had the color copy, but it was highlighted in the yellow.
Ten, ten thousand dollars we got to give him.
Right, 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 it, it needs some arrangement, it is one of our older vehicles. Um, so what that does, that, that takes us down another vehicle since we're not going to fix that one. So, that's why I want you to get guys to get a, look at the price to fix that, why don't we have to probably park that vehicle? And that's the one you see parked on the back slab, the Dodge Durango, that's now, so that does, puts us down another vehicle.
So, we're down two vehicles?
Three.
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 Yes.
And we have one on order.
Yeah.
And we will be, whatever.
Don't know when that'll be.
And we do have a couple of older ones in the fleet, but we, we're keeping them, um, that's what, kind of see the tab you see for the other repairs that we have on a monthly basis for those.
Any other questions? Comments?
Chief, uh.
Yes, sir.
In the uh discussion just was held by the citizens. Speed bumps, areas of lack of patrol in certain areas. Is there anything that we know we need some more officers?
Right.
Somewhere.
All the first, I think we've done or, or doing pretty much all we can do, city has supplied radars to all the, all the units and vehicles. The issue that we have is unfortunately, not, it's not an excuse, it's just a matter of fact that the, that we can't be in all places at all times. You know, if we, if we saturate one place and kind of get the speed slowed down, have to move over to another place and then the speed just picks back up because like I said, be, be, places, places, places people are trying to get to are not going away. All I can say is we can just increase the patrol in areas of different problems that we have and we try to, when we, when we get the um, we get notified of problems about speeders. But it doesn't take but one time for somebody to get stopped and then it slows down for a long period of time and then we have to move on to another place and it just picks back up. It's kind of like, you know, kind of like putting a band-aid on a victim, damn, so. But we, we, when we, when we hear about the problems, we do have officers um go to that area more often and um try to um catch the speeders and try to slow it down.
I guess my concern is, and I heard it twice, was that they called and there was no response, so.
I find it hard to believe, I, I find it hard to believe, our officers will respond, um, now, if they're not getting the, the, the the satisfaction they have as far as slowing down the speed, I don't know if my officers get over there and um, and no, no cars are coming. I can say this, I was unaware of any complaints about speeding in a particular area on Cedar Street. Um, as a matter of fact, when I heard the speed bumps was coming up, I was like, I got in the garage, we were having a problem over there. Um, it, it doesn't matter, as a matter of fact, we have an officer that lives right there on the corner of Cedar and Hankins, um, and have another officer that lives right down the street. So, there are patrol cars over there pretty much quite a, all, twenty-four, seven. But like I said, I was unaware of there any speeding problems that, that got called in Cedar and I, and again, I do find, I would look into that situation.
So, you will look because it should be something on the law to some.
Well, I'd have to get a timeframe of when it is, basically, it was kind of a wide, open statement, I've, I've called twice and the police never showed up. Um, I just, like I said, I find it hard to believe because our officers know that if they get a call, they get, what happens, if you call the police department, you get dispatch. You know, it's a log there, the officers know to at least go to that area. Now, but I, like I said, if I can get a ti, I'll try to, try to, a timeframe when this happened and look into it, but kind of hard to answer, you know, out of the blue.
I understand, but it's, it's, you know, if someone calls you, I, I would think that there would be a response.
Right, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, and it, and it, and it definitely will be a response, I don't, like I said, I don't, I have never had, had that happen where someone said we called and officers did. And when we do and we look into it, there's always another reason, like another call or something.
Any other questions, comments? If not, then thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Chief Hayes?
Hurry up.
What, I'm figuring.
All right. We got a residential fire alarm going off at the moment, that's what the alarm was.
Do you need the guy?
No, I've got a guy on the way out here, so.
Okay.
Unless they call and tell me it's an actual fire, we're good.
Okay.
All right, so the month of November, fire department responded to fifteen calls. Uh, two of those being toned out to all the members. Um, we had a some monthly meeting in November first, which we had nineteen members present. And the volunteer payroll of the month was twenty-five, eighty-nine, twenty-two. And Charlotte, I'm not sure, isn't that the one we amended today? Maybe it was Teresa.
It was Teresa, I guess it looked out what you gave.
It would be minus out another three hundred dollars from that, is what it was, we overpaid on, on one check. And then for our training last month, um, we did a live burn here at the end of May and bond. Uh, it was conducted for a total of five hours. All went well, as far as I can tell, no unknown damage to the neighbor's fence or anything else was done. And under our general, um, you know, we still have those bids out on the fire engines, um, that the council was asking for there. Engine three is currently out of service from when we did our pump test, you know, it, it didn't pass. And engine two still has, still has a few issues there that we're contending with.
I, I was under the impression that we were moving forward, getting ready for the first of the year of engine, is that right?
I mean, the, the council, if I am not mistaken, and I might be, they didn't vote last time to, to, to actually purchase that three, what was it, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, but we did get, we did get, uh, he was able to get the uh office, or the uh.
It was three hundred and thirty-six thousand, six fifty-five was the total for the cheapest fire engine that, you know, out of the bids that we had. Uh, plus a few pieces of equipment to go on that truck.
But it is actually in the budget here, we, we uh have the three thirty-six, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-five.
We have, we have the payments, uh, that was included in, yes. I just need a vote to proceed with uh purchasing that, if that's what you all want to do. And then we'll have to work to get the uh bank rates and everything for you all to vote on uh which uh interest rate to go with.
As far as I am aware, uh, according to the manufacturers, you know, there's not any money that has to transpire until date of delivery. So, um, the best I know it will be in February before the truck would arrive to the city of Warren anyway.
Okay. It is actually included in, in our report for tonight.
And then there are general maintenance, um, just like say, engine two, which is the newest truck that we have, it's an oh eight model, that's the one that has the transmission issues we've been contending with. And it also has an actuator, the, the ladders that are on the side of it, they raise up and down because they go up really high. Uh, one of those actuators needing replacing right now, so we're in the middle of trying to get that situated. Uh, and it's also developed some kind of diesel leak on the pump in the front, I'm tending to that now, trying to, trying to get it repaired as well. And then like I say, engine three is the one that's across town, it's out of service. And we had a positive pressure fan and a generator that we took out to uh, to be repaired by lumberjack saw, we've got it back in service now. We didn't have any vacation or sick leave.
And as you can see, under the fire committee report, the civil service did meet and they hired two, um, no, eight, one volunteer fireman. And then they also uh recommended, or they hired uh Ray Chuck Moore. And I, I guess the council, of course, it's in the budget, so if you pass the budget, his salary will be in that budget, um. You have his resume and you can see that he is. We had three applicants that they interviewed and this is the one that they uh chose to hire. Any other questions? I know that uh Councilman uh Telfry was not able to be here tonight, but he has deferred any decisions to his committee members.
I said, for about the truck, I did speak back with those guys and they all agreed to stand firm in the prices that they gave us. Um, technically, there are a couple of things that went up in the month of November, but they were going to honor it until the end of the year. After the first, it'll be forty percent more, or ten percent more.
And where was it coming from?
Got it, Casco Industries for all the equipment and Deep South, which is our Mississippi for the truck.
And the one that we're wanting is.
Deep South.
Deep South, okay, I guess on behalf of Alderman Telfry, I move that the uh city of Warren, I move forward with purchasing uh the fire truck and tools in the amount of three hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars.
It, I believe that amount is just for the truck.
No, that's the truck. Truck should have been two hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Yeah. Two hundred and eighty-seven thousand and then when you add the uh, well, it has like two thousand dollars here, but the total for trucks and tools, according to this information, is three hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
And second, any more discussion? All those in favor by a show of hands? That's uh unanimous, okay. So, what are the next steps?
I'm gonna contact Deep South and Casco and just tell them that it got approved here to start with and I'm sure that they will sign or send us a a letter of acceptance for them and we'll have to just sign and, and commit to buying the truck. But as far as the payment wise, I don't believe we'd have to put any money down, I think it's just a payment upon receipt.
We'll have the other information ready for y'all and then we're going to approve uh the loan and uh the interest rate. Okay. Nothing else, okay, thank you, sir. Go ahead, go ahead. Let me know what it was. Uh, Mr. May? For your last meeting?
Good evening.
Good evening.
With each and every one of you, Merry Christmas, I don't see any gifts. Well, before Christmas. It's coming up, a couple of weeks, so.
Got to get ready.
Sanitation department is uh doing well, all our equipment is up and running, no uh, no issues with anything at this time, so we're still a little backlog on limbs, but not much and we are working on that. Anybody's got any questions on sanitation?
You still looking forward to retirement?
I am. Very much, one of my first two months are already booked up. They do, they do stuff, yes, yeah, so. I'll try to stretch that out, maybe three months.
And we concluded interviews today and uh we'll be making that decision, uh, probably making that decision from the committee that interviewed in a couple of, uh, a day or so.
Let us know.
So, you use that interviewing committee panel?
Yes, ma'am.
Who are, who?
Myself, Mike, and Teresa.
I mean, is that a standard panel or just for this particular position?
Well, it, for this particular position, it was those three people, but when we do for other positions, it, it might vary, always myself and Teresa.
So, you move over to right now?
Yes, ma'am. Depending on which department we are interviewing for. Okay. Anything on buildings or code?
I don't have any properties to bring forth, uh, currently this month, uh, we did get uh property on Cherry Street was moved by the owner. Uh, and fourteen oh three West Pine was cleaned up. By the owner, so we still got uh three properties that are left to, to get cleaned up.
I had someone to inquire about the lot on Abernathy.
Yes, we're waiting on some prices on that.
Anything else of Mr. May? Come on now, this is his last meeting, come on, somebody. There will be a retirement uh reception for him, uh, the thirtieth.
That means you do have to show up.
We cut it down to an hour.
And then he'll be around at our luncheon Thursday, so you can visit with him then too.
Okay, thank you, Mike, appreciate you. Thank you so much for your service. Mr. Heinzberger?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, first off, I'd like to say we did finish the asphalting, uh, blacked out another city streets. Uh, spent a lot of time this month on the Christmas decorations, but we got it all worked out. Uh, we cleaned a few uh roads, cut a few limbs back off that low hanging limb. Main uh thing we've done is we've picked up a lot of trash, we have a very bad problem with trash also. We've assisted a couple uh desert departments as well this month, but overall, we doing, all we can do is what we got to do with.
And I've witnessed you picking up trash and doing things and, good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the decorations looks great too.
Thank you.
I haven't had anyone to complain about the speed bumps on Melrose and Bel Air, except for one person who doesn't live here. Other than that, it is up tremendously.
Good deal. What they're designed for.
That's right.
We can save one child's life, we, we've done it, we've done our job.
Okay, no, no other questions, comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I didn't ask Alderman Mosley if you had anything else, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I will contact, see what we can get worked out on a, a street committee meeting and probably try to do it as soon as we can.
Well, if everybody was gonna be at the luncheon, you might want, I mean, that's just a possibility.
That is possibility, okay.
Just throw that out there.
We're not, it's after sixteen.
It's Thursday, it's Thursday.
All right, see if we could have one Thursday at one o'clock.
Is that, could you make that? And then I'll get with, you call Joel.
At the depot or where you have it?
Yeah, we just have it over there. That would work. You know, when the others over with, we can have our meeting. Thank you.
Uh, okay, Community and Economic Development Committee?
Not at this time.
Okay, now then, we get to, I guess, the meat of our meeting.
Just a clarification, so we're gonna have a street committee meeting at the depot, is that what I heard?
Yes.
Okay, did you say one o'clock?
You might wanna make that one-thirty-ish because I think, uh, we'll quit serving about one o'clock.
Okay.
And then that way, uh, most of the employees would be, not that they have to be cleared out, because it is a public meeting, but, uh,
That would be, yeah, that would be better, one-thirty.
Okay, Ms. Henderson?
If you will note on our agenda, we have three items listed, uh, under Ways and Means. Uh, the adoption of the resolution setting the various salaries for twenty twenty-two, and the adoption of resolution, uh, setting the budget and then committee report. So I'm going to, uh, move up the committee report before I go into the actual voting on the, uh, two resolutions, so that you will know exactly what you are voting, uh, on. If you noted our minutes from the last meeting, uh, it did go into detail, uh, the actions that we took. Uh, the City of Warren Ways and Means Committee, uh, met since our last council meeting, uh, on the twenty-ninth, uh, here in the municipal courtroom. Uh, just to give you, uh, a recap, uh, during our meeting, we did have all three of the committee members, uh, present. Alderman Mosley, Alderman Frazier, myself, along with our mayor. From our meeting, as I just previously mentioned, from last month, November the third, we, uh, made, uh, some contractual agreements as well as, uh, employees, uh, increases. Uh, the City of Warren did contract with the, uh, area agency on aging for air conditioners for elderly and disabled individuals in the amount of two thousand dollars. Uh, we also made a contractual agreement with the Bradley County Historical Museum to preserve the history and noteworthy artifacts housed in the museum in the amount of two thousand dollars. The City of Warren made a contractual agreement for services rendered with the Bradley County Pink Tomato Festival in the amount of ten thousand dollars. And I did give you a detailed packet, uh, of those increases for the, uh, sanitation employees, the street employees, recreational employee, the part-time worker, Joe Caver, and we did not make a decision, uh, on the manager for the Parks and Rec. However, the mayor is recommending that all department heads, uh, be paid the salary of forty thousand through forty-five thousand. Uh, when I looked through our City of Warren Personnel Policy Manual, the manual is very much outdated. Uh, it did not have, um, a clear definition of a, uh, department head. Uh, we did discuss, uh, if all department heads were exempt employees versus, uh, non-exempt. Uh, in an effort, uh, for the administration to, uh, balance the budget, as always, we did use the city sales and use tax, the county sales and use tax, as well as dollars from the Economic Development, uh, fund. Um, just to let you know, um, as I did before, those who, salaries would be, uh, increased. Uh, again, the administration recommended, uh, for the Parks and Rec, uh, manager, uh, five hundred dollars. Uh, however, if we, uh, move the Parks and Rec, uh, manager to a department head, then, um, the amount would be six thousand, one hundred, thirty-five dollars and thirty-two cent. Uh, with the five hundred dollar recommendation, the current salary is thirty-three thousand, eight hundred, sixty-four dollars and forty-eight cent. Adding the five hundred dollars, it would give a total of thirty-four thousand, three hundred, sixty-four dollars and forty-eight cent. Uh, if we went with, uh, upgrading, uh, to a department head, uh, the total salary would be forty thousand dollars, adding six thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-two cent, uh, to, uh, to the current salary of thirty-three thousand, eight sixty-four, forty-eight. Under law enforcement, the current salary, uh, for our chief is fifty-three thousand, three hundred, twenty dollars and one cent. With, uh, him having twenty-eight years of service, um, the administration recommended six seventy-nine, uh, ninety-nine, which would have given a even amount of fifty-four thousand. The committee is recommending an additional two thousand, which would give fifty-five thousand, three hundred, twenty dollars and one cent. Uh, for, uh, the employee, Carolyn Hardy, who did not receive, uh, an increase during our last review period, uh, going from the amount of twelve sixty-nine, the request was thirteen forty, however, the committee is recommending fifteen dollars. And for our part-time, um, fire, uh, chief employee, Larry Hayes, uh, the committee is recommending, um, eighteen dollars. We were, it was noted fourteen oh three, current requested sixteen. Uh, we felt that eighteen would be a good, uh, number there. The current, uh, position for the building code slash sanitation manager, the position that Mr. May is currently in, is vacant. The mayor is currently interviewing and the information that I had that Mr. May's current salary was thirty-eight thousand, two eighty-nine, sixteen. However, the recommendation from the mayor is that, uh, beginning, uh, salaries for department heads be forty thousand with a range of up to, uh, forty-five thousand. Uh, with the administration, uh, we had already taken care of that, uh, during our last, uh, month's meeting. Changing the salary for, uh, Charlotte Brown to fourteen dollars, Teresa Sandine, uh, seventeen dollars. And the new employee at the same amount, uh, well, it was twelve thirty-eight and requested thirteen dollars for, for that person. Um, sanitation and the street, uh, I've already, uh, shared with you. The current salary, however, for the, uh, street department head is, uh, forty-five thousand and there was, uh, that amount already in the budget plus. Uh, the district court, uh, request, we have already, uh, discussed that in our last meeting and we know how the funds will be, uh, displayed there. Uh, with equipment and purchases, the street department has, uh, requested a Mini X machine and I needed to know what that was and some of the others probably already knew, but it is a, uh, piece of equipment that clean out, uh, the ditches and that cost is somewhere approximately, uh, fifty thousand dollars. Now, you heard the police chief report about the shape of our vehicles. Uh, within the budget, as we always do, there is one, uh, patrol car there. However, the mayor, uh, tells us that we may be able to use the American Rescue dollars. Is that, do you think that's still?
They still have not made any kind of a, uh, notification of what we can, but hopefully.
And then we have already, excuse me, made the motion for the, uh, fire truck in the amount of three hundred and this is three hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars, so, uh, that was, uh, what we made the motion on and if we go with, um, all five of the department, uh, heads, except for, uh, the, uh, police chief who has been with us for, uh, twenty-eight years, for the actual building code sanitation, uh, forty thousand to forty-five thousand dollar range. Uh, with the street, uh, department head, uh, already listed forty-five thousand and our incoming full-time, uh, fire chief versus what we currently have now, which is a part-time fire chief in the amount of twenty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, uh, that would change to forty thousand through forty-five thousand. And if, uh, we move, uh, the recreation manager to, uh, a department head, uh, plus the six thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-two cent would bring that position up to, uh, forty thousand dollars. So are there any questions on any of those numbers that I have just shared? Committee member? Okay.
You mentioned that, Michelle, how much?
Under administration, uh, Charlotte, fourteen dollars. Uh, current rate, uh, twelve dollars and seventy-nine cent. Uh, the, uh, mayor requested thirteen fifty and the committee, uh, recommended, uh, fourteen dollars. We do, mayor, again, our personnel policy manual is so outdated. It has a, a, a number of things in there, uh, to include your administrative assistant, uh, serving as the HR person. All of that is listed there, but I, I, uh, wanted to share this with the council just to see, because we do need to have some, something in the personnel policy relating, uh, the salaries. We did, uh, discuss it during our committee meeting relating the, uh, department heads. Um, and I just wanna throw this out, the starting annual base salary for the City of Warren exempt department head shall be forty thousand dollars, uh, with a salary range up to forty-five thousand dollars. The term exempt employee refers to a category of employees set out in the Fair Labor Standards Act, which is FLSA. Exempt employees do not receive overtime pay. The employee must be responsible for supervising at least two full-time employees. That should cover, or if, if we add that to our, uh, personnel policy, uh, what we are identifying as, um, as exempt employees. So I know not all managers are department heads. I mean, we realize that, but it would be whatever the pleasure of, of the council, uh, is. I mean, the mayor is recommending the forty thousand, forty-five. I don't have a problem with that. I, I think that, that is probably a good start with getting qualified, uh, applicants for the actual, uh, position that, everybody okay with it?
Parks and Rec does have what, part-time, one part-time employee?
I, I'm not sure.
During the summertime, we do have other part-time, but it's, uh, they're part-time hires for the concession and then the pool is over, the pool employees.
And someone mentioned, mentioned the shooting range as well.
Well, actually, I, I think in your organizational chart, it is under him.
Everybody okay? In your packet, you should have, uh, two, uh, resolutions. Uh, one is the resolution setting the, uh, salaries, uh, of the, uh, various officials and then the second resolution is the one that will be adopting, uh, the, uh, the budget. So everyone clearly understands what's in the budget, what we passed during our last council meeting, which was November the third, uh, and then what was actually, uh, presented, uh, today, as well as, um, upping our department heads to, um, becoming all receiving, uh, pretty much the same base, uh, base salary. Up to a range of forty-five thousand.
Based on the experience of the individual that's hired?
Well, I went on to say, uh, if hired from outside of the city government, the applicant must be proficient in said field and for promotional opportunities, salary increases, uh, for the employee if they have not had to go on a performance improvement plan in the last twelve months or have not had disciplinary problems within the last twelve months and the evaluation is that of a solid employee.
Thank you, ma'am.
I just wanted to ask, especially like on the administrative assistant and all of the jobs description and things that she does, just a little bit more than a new person walking in the door?
Well, I, I mean, it's up to y'all. I, I'd have to, I mean, we'll have to redo the budget, but, um, I guess we wouldn't, we, we might, I don't know if we could.
No, we, we would have enough. Yeah, yeah, you wouldn't have to redo it for that.
I agree with just, uh, Andrew.
Yeah, 'cause I know periodically I talk with her about insurance things and student debt taxes and things like that.
So what is your recommendation?
Fifteen dollars.
Fifteen? Does anyone have a problem with that? Are, are there any other line item that you would like for me to repeat? Are you okay? Madam, uh, mayor, if you would, uh, we are ready for the resolution setting the various official salaries for twenty twenty-two and I'm showing that it is A six-six-four. I understand six-six-two.
Well, like I said, we found an error in, uh, resolution numbers that were changed. Got them all, got everything in order and changed in time for the meeting.
Okay, so the one that you have is going to have A six-six-four on your correction?
Yes, ma'am.
Mine has six-six-four.
Okay. Well, now let me ask.
I got one, it just, I like it. But we had it though. We covered it.
Okay, let me ask a question here, just to make sure, because the other resolution is six-six-three, the one on the budget. So do we need to, um, do it first?
Is, is this one actually six-six-three?
Right.
The salaries are six-six-four.
Right. Okay, the salaries are six-six-four and the budget is six-six-three?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to do six-six-three first and then go down it. That's what I thought. I just wanted verification.
So, uh, this one is for the budget. Hope my eyes hold out on this. You want my glasses? Okay, resolution number A six-six-three. A resolution adopting a budget for the City of Warren, Arkansas for the calendar year twenty twenty-two and for other purposes. Whereas the mayor has submitted to the city council for approval or disapproval, a proposed budget for the City of Warren, Arkansas for the calendar year twenty twenty-two and whereas the following budget has been approved by a majority of the members of the city council at a meeting called for this purpose and whereas said budget is now on file in the office of the city clerk and shall be available for public inspection during regular business hours. available for public inspection during regular business hours. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of Warren, Arkansas, section one, that the following budget for the operations of the City of Warren, Arkansas for the calendar year 2022 be and the same, is hereby approved and funds in said amounts are hereby appropriated for said purposes and accounts during the year 2022, from time to time as needed. A detailed budget document shall be available in the office of the city clerk for public inspection during the regular business hours. Our non-restrictive expenditures, administration budget will be $400,487. Airport, $19,100. Armory Neighborhood Center, $12,350. Building and codes, $24,990. Cultural Center, $35,900. District Court, $92,480. Economic Development, $79,400. Fire is $434,015. Law Enforcement is $1,617,700. Municipal Building is $32,050. Other is $25,500. Recreation, $180,370. Sanitation is $816,480. Senior Citizen Center is $3,830. The shooting range is $50,058. That's a total general amount of $3,824,710. The street fund, which is a restricted expenditures, the budget is $562,615. And other funds, sales and use tax, $1,676. Economic Development, $350,000. Community Facility Grant will be none, zero. AEDC Grant, JE Food Group is zero. District Court Fund is $15,000. American Rescue Plan Act is $577,249.22. Laffy Account will be $30,000. Breathalyzer, $400. Child Passenger Protection Fund is $150. Municipal Judge Retirement is $3,250. Court Automation is $15,000. Emergency vehicle is zero. Shooting range is $3,000. Warren Bypass Project EPA, zero. FAA Aviation Grant, zero. Fireman Pension is $6,200. Total Other is $2,676,249.22. For a total budget for the City of Warren is $7,63,574.22.
I move that we adopt resolution number A663.
Second, any other discussion? All those in favor, by show of hands? Okay, now we can move to resolution number A664. A resolution fixing and appropriating the salaries for various city officials for the year 2022 and for other purposes. Be it ordained by the city council of the City of Warren, Arkansas. Section one, for the year 2022, the mayor of Warren, Arkansas, shall receive a salary of $46,566.75 payable in equal monthly installments. Section two, for the year 2022, the city clerk of Warren, Arkansas, shall receive a salary of $43,568.19 payable in equal monthly installments. Section three, for the year 2022, the city treasurer of Warren, Arkansas, shall receive a salary of $13,024.80 payable in equal monthly installments. Section four, for the year 2022, the city attorney, including all assistant city attorneys, shall receive a total salary for said office of $19,584.77. For the year 2022, the alderman of Warren, Arkansas, shall each receive a salary of $3,000. Section six, if any section or part of a section of this resolution or the application thereof to any person or circumstance is held to be unconstitutional or invalid, such inva, inva, invalid.
Invalidity.
Invalidity shall not affect the remaining provisions of the application thereof of this resolution. And to that end, the provisions of this resolution are declared to be serviceable. Section seven, all resolutions and parts of resolutions in conflict, herewith or hereby repealed to the extent of any such conflict. Section eight, emergency clause, the city council of Warren, Arkansas, has determined that the retention of experienced and knowledgeable city employees and officials is necessary to the efficient operation of the city's business and to the maintenance of the peace, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city. And that adequate compensation is a necessary part of the retention of the said personnel and officials. And to that end, an emergency is hereby declared to exist. And the provisions of this appropriation, appropriation resolution, resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
I move that resolution number A664 be approved, but changing the word "and" to "A" resolution.
I saw that as I read it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in second to approve resolution A664. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, by show of hands?
I move that we adopt the emergency clause.
A motion in second to adopt the emergency clause. Any discussion? All those in favor, by show of hands? Unanimous. Okay. Now, where are Parks and Rec, Mr. Wagner?
Good afternoon. I don't have any complaints, really any complaints of mine. I appreciate the truck a lot. The street department helped me out a lot the last couple of weeks. They helped me tear down some buildings, uh, buildings and some trash out at the complex. And they brung in a bunch of gravel to help all the potholes in the parking lot. So we're doing good there. The school started their tryouts and practiced today, was their first day. So we're getting back, uh, power washing the bleachers, get everything ready for that. The depot is finished, all the windows are in, that's done. So I'm sure y'all get to see it sooner or later, but.
Thursday.
Thursday, yeah, 16th. And we're just trying to get around mulching all the leaves and get everything cleaned up and get everything going. And that's about it, but everything else going pretty good.
Any questions?
Have you had anyone to request the use of the depot yet?
Um, we've had a few.
We've had inquiries, but.
Earlier in the year.
Since it's getting ready, yeah.
The main, the main thing is no kitchen. Of course, the army doesn't have a kitchen either, but anyway, that's kind of been the problem.
Yeah. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Uh, you've got the minutes of, well, no meeting for the planning commission, aviation has not met yet. Got to get that meeting within next month. You've got water and sewer commission minutes, balance sheets, housing authority commission. You've got their minutes of their meeting. Cultural Center Commission, you've got the monthly report. Is there any unfinished business?
Committee assignments?
I'm, I'm good with them staying as is.
I move that the committee assignments remain the same.
Motion in second for committee assignments to stay, stay the same. Any discussion? All those in favor, by show of hands? That's three, any opposed? One no vote, I mean, one abstain.
What's me is not.
Public statements, no one else is here to speak. Announcements, don't forget the annual holiday luncheon for the 16th. Christmas holidays are scheduled for December the 24th and 27th. New Year's holiday is scheduled for December the 31st. The municipal lead conference, if you've not signed up, it's the 19th through the 20th. I need a motion to pay the bills for November.
I move that we pay the bills for the month of November.
Motion in second to pay November's bills, all those in favor, by show of hands? Unanimous. We set the next meeting for January, it will be agenda meeting the 6th, and the meeting will be the 6th, the 10th at 5:30. So now a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Amen.